If I may have everybody's attention, so everybody understands what's going on. I see that we have a lot of people from Brooks County, and I appreciate y'all showing up. I wish we had this every month, y'all would know more about what's going on. To give y'all an understanding, there's been misinformation. There was a meeting tonight discussing the East Brooks Fire Department, which is not on the agenda. That was given to the president, I believe it was Mr. Schreck, on Tuesday of last week, because we were still needing pertinent information for the budget that we haven't been able to receive and other information, so they were, they're not on the agenda. But being that y'all did have a town hall meeting this Saturday, and unfortunately we couldn't have a meeting with both sides, the commission has decided to have a meeting, town hall meeting, here at the courthouse, May 10th at 6:00 p.m. That way, both sides can be heard. So if y'all'd like to stay for the rest of the remaining of the meeting, we appreciate it. If not, we'd just like to let you know so y'all wouldn't have to sit here if y'all didn't want to sit here for the duration of the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have the signing sheet.
We have a public hearing set up. Ms. Sherry, would you please come up for the special exception?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on your agenda is Ms. Amy Britton. She is asking for a special exception to do a community-wide venue once a quarter. She resides off of 133. She has a little under, she's got 4.33 acres, and she lives on the property. She has got good access, as you know, off of 133. She says in her letter of intent that she has liability for the farm, and she has gotten a huge policy for anybody that might get hurt or whatever. But she is basically wanting to do this at her house. She's already got horses, and she works with children, some that are a little bit challenged with some things. Her husband is in military. The property is owned agricultural. She wants to have pony rides. If it's Easter, the bunny rabbit's out there. If it's Christmas, Santa Claus will be out there. She's a photographer. She'll take pictures. They'll get to play. She's taught with midday farms out of Landis County, and they're going to bring some mom pets out for the children to pet. I don't believe it will be going on at night at all, from what she has said. Staff has reviewed it. It was advertised. I've been out and done a site visit at the property, and staff and planning commission recommend approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions from the board?
My only question is, I mean, does she have an expectation of numbers? So we're not talking three, five hundred?
No. As a matter of fact, in her letter that she wrote for her letter of intent, she said she had plenty of parking for the size crowd that she was expecting. And like I say, she's already got, there's a barn out there with bathroom facilities already in it. It's all fenced off. She just wants to do something for the community.
So would this, one more question. Would this be, so this would only be for family? Or would this be something she'd be renting out?
Say that again, sir.
Would she be renting anything these venues out, or just for families?
No, no. She'll be doing it all.
I was worried about noise for the neighbors.
Right.
Because we don't want to...
We had no opposition whatsoever at the planning commission.
That's possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherry, you don't, you don't have to sit down. We have the variance on the special use permit. There's no...
I'm sorry, Mr. Paulson. Do you want to ask if anybody's for or against?
Okay. Well, there was nobody. But if there's anybody for or against the variance for the special use permit, we just got the signing sheet. There was no signatures. But is there anybody left here that would like to sign or not? Okay. Ms. Sherry, I can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charles and Rachel Swilly do have resided at 143 Church Street in Dixie, Georgia, have lived there for over, for almost 50 years. That's what they call home. On March the 3rd, their house caught fire. The family is here. The daughter can give you some more information on that, but they lost everything they had. They're both in their late 70s. They are both residents of Brooks County and have been pretty much on their life, I would say. They're good people, and they just want to go home. For what time they've got left here, they say they just want to be home. And as you know, Dixie is a, in that particular area, R1 residential site-built houses. However, the precedent has been set. There's a mobile home out there in one of, in an area of Dixie. You've got a business that is out there, which I checked today, and there was no business license for it, and nobody has said a word. But it's not allowed in R1 district either. And we're just asking you to let these people, they're wanting to put a 28 by 40 something size mobile home on the property. And when Mr. Charles and Ms. Rachel Swilly cease to live in that property, in that house, then the house be removed. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
I'm just going to state the obvious. So when they do cease to live at that location, it will be in this application or this...
It's in the staff report, yes.
It will be that they, that that does have to move off the property. Okay.
Contingent upon our approval.
Right, 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 right.
Was there any, I'm sorry, was there any opposition at the zoning and planning?
No, there was not.
Anything, Mr. Cody, Mr. Maxwell?
No.
Just let me also say that they need all the criteria for variance, because your definition of a variance, a variance is a relaxation of the dimensional and/or the development standards of the zoning ordinance that will not be contrary to the public interest if we're owing to conditions particular to the property and not the results of the intentional actions of the applicant. A little enforcement of these regulations would result in unnecessary and undue hardship. And it wasn't their fault.
Right. Thank you.
The two commissioners that was on the board when we put the other mobile home, and I don't think, I know Mr. Carter, you was on board. Were you on board? Mr. Carter was on board, and I was on board. Ms. Mile, I don't know whether Ms. Mile was here. So we granted that several years ago, you know, to have another mobile, put that mobile on there.
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. and Ms. Willy's property, their backyard butts up, and it's got plenty of vegetation covered, but it backs up to the old Westbrook School. To the east, they share a property line with Dixie Volunteer Fire Department. To the south is a cemetery, and then a house on the corner that faces Harman Street. And to the west is like a little vacant area and then a house. They're about the only house on Church Street, and it's not right on the main drag through Dixie. It's back in the bag.
Sherry, from your permission, when I just heard you from the plan, reading permission, and then they made up, I hear that you all accepted for them, you all already got approval, so. Ladies and gentlemen, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Horton? The comprehensive plan for Brooks County and the cities of Barwick, Morven, and Pavo and Quipman?
Okay. Thank you for letting me be here today at this public hearing. This has been a month, many months process updating the comprehensive plan. My name is James Horton. I'm with the Southern Georgia Regional Commission. For anybody who might not know, we serve 18 counties here in South Georgia, Brooks County being one of those counties, and we are updating your comprehensive plan, which is a five-year plan, action that includes everything the county and the cities of Barwick, Morven, Pavo, and Quipman might like to include in their plan for the next five years. So we hope this is a roadmap. This is a picture, or this is a completed plan. I'm here today to answer any questions that anybody in the audience might have about this comprehensive plan. This is a requirement to be updated every five years from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. So we've got your plan updated. It's been a several-month process. Like I said, we went through four workshops, which included representation from Brooks County, Barwick, Morven, Pavo, and Quipman. So we had five governments represented in the process of re-updating the comprehensive plan. Are there any questions? The plan is, it's a set of goals and strategies, and making part of it is a work program for Brooks County, a work program for Barwick, Morven, Pavo, and Quipman. All have a work program. It is either of the work items that their commissions expect to complete within the next five years. It's a requirement by the state, Department of Community Affairs, that this document be kept and adopted by the county and the city. So each municipality will individually adopt this plan on their own, and the county will adopt this plan as well. And it will serve as a guidebook for the next five years for projects and plans within the county. Particular projects like road improvements, building improvements, new facilities, improvements to things like maybe water systems or sewer systems, any of anything like that that a municipal government might provide as a service to the public.
So does that include the bond where the fire department is in Dixie that could have saved their house if it didn't probably volunteer?
Well, they're talking individually about the services the fire department provides in here. If the county was going to build a new fire department in Dixie or extend the services, then it might be included in this book.
So you guys have set plans, because you're just saying the plan, but you're not looking into it?
No, they're talking individually here about Dixie Fire Department.
I could add something. If you're interested in seeing the whole plan, it's at www.sgrc.us.
Yes. Or you can, I can pass this around and let anybody in this room have a look at it. If you'd like to look at it, it's free to go around the room. That's what this public hearing is for. If you'd like to pull the plan and have a look through it, anybody? All right. If you have any questions, be seated and let the plan move around the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
All right. I pose one question to you. Does this plan also include any agreements that would be between the county and Morven, the county and the city, of equipment, et cetera?
No, sir, it does not. That is a separate process. It's called a service delivery strategy. There we go. It's called a service delivery strategy, and it's also mandated by the Department of Community Affairs. And the service delivery strategy is a different document, and it gets updated, I think, every 10 years. But it's not part of, it's part of this process, but it's not a part of that document right there. That's a separate one.
This particular document also allows the state, to the folks in Atlanta, to know what we're doing down south, in which they allocate money. So that's why it's such an important part of being a plan for just not the county, but the county and each city that's in the county.
Absolutely.
So that's what I was hoping to hear, an agreement between folks.
Right. Well, thank you. The service delivery is part of the comprehensive plan process, but it is a separate document. The service delivery is not due to be updated in Brooks County, but the comprehensive plan is, so it falls, they follow different schedules. So when it comes time to update the service delivery strategy, I'm sure I'll be here talking to you about that as well. But you're right, this document does mean that Brooks County and Morven, Barwick, Quipman, and Pavo will be able to get funding through the state whenever funding is offered through different programs and grants and things. It's all based on this comprehensive plan document.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes the public hearing.
Did you ask if there was anybody for or against?
Well, there's none.
I just agree in whatever you can, so we can talk.
Just for the record, was there anybody for or against the variance for special use permit? Was there any for or against? Nobody signed the sheet, but just for the record?
They're for it. Me, I'm for it.
Okay.
He's talking about for the mobile homes.
Yeah, yes.
I'm for it, and I actually go next door.
Okay.
If you'd like to call this.
Would she like to sign it?
Would you, would you like, would you like to sign it?
I'm sure.
All right. Thank you. Don't wait, that's the wrong one. Here, that one.
This is, it's actually my parents and my kid put their name on here as well.
Mr. Chairman, there was a signing sheet with five of your names on it.
That was Mr. Horton's...
The comprehensive plan. I just wanted to make sure no one got them all confused back there, so.
Would you like to say anything you can?
I'm Carla. That's my mom and dad. I've had the opportunity to have them stay with me since the house has burned. I live in Racine. That's about a 50-mile trip, one way, from my house to Dixie. These two people go and they check on that lot at least every other day, if not every day. We rode by there before I came here for my mom to see if her big bush is getting worn. Dad's 78. My mom's 75. I was 10-year-old, 10-years-old when I went to that house. So I was raised there until I grew up and moved on. Brother and sister, the same. My children, my grandchildren, their grandchildren, great-grandchildren, needs to be there because that's home. They lived in the home for almost 45 years. And when they say they've lost everything, they've lost everything. It's kind of disheartening, because when Ms. Sherry said that they went up to the fire department, you can stand on my mom's and daddy's front porch and see the fire department. I don't know, in the fire report, there was tacos, it running out of water. My mom called 911 at 8:01. Fire report said they got there at 8:25. My mom called me at 8:09. I work in Boston. She called me at 8:09, and I was at her house at 9:33. And the fire department had just gotten there. I don't know, I wanted to listen to the 911 call, just so I can see if maybe there was, maybe some misinterpretation before it to be that close. Nothing, nothing could be said. And there were days that we went, me, my sister, all of us, to try and find anything that we could give to them that was theirs. They do not want to have to build a home, a stick home, because of their age. Everybody know where COVID is right now. There's so much stuff on backorder you can't get. Who's even to say that it would be finished before? And the most simplest thing for them to do is to have a mobile home. It would be a brand-new home, not asking for a used one, and it would be set up probably to look even nicer than the home that they had. But that would give them the opportunity then to live there and continue their life that they have known for the past 45 years. And that's the only, I just don't understand how that wouldn't be something everybody would want for their family if it happened to them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, if you're on the, yes, ma'am?
Do you need to sign something?
I think she already signed you in.
No, I didn't. I saw her.
Because I live next door. I watched their house burn to the ground. In fact, out my bedroom window, the first thing I see every morning is their house. And when I woke up that morning, they were coming out. When I came running outside, I didn't know if they were in the house. They're elderly people. Come inside. Now, my house is as old as theirs. I have a house full of children in my house. I have an eight-month-old grandbaby. Why did the fire trucks leave in the middle of the fire? They left and were gone for 20 minutes and then came back. Now, we were told that's because they ran out of water. Why? Why did they run out of water when the fire department is next door? Okay, so I'm so very, very thankful that they survived. They could put a tent there if that's what they want to put to live out the rest of their life. It doesn't bother me, and I live next door. So I don't know when that bothers somebody on the other side of the county. But what if my house catches on fire, and my grandbaby's upstairs, and my grandbaby's locked in a room? Are they going to come there and have to leave and go get water and come back to get children out of my house if it catches on fire? Because I just was informed, and I didn't know if I'm new to Brooks County, but I was just informed that my land taxes are double what the people pay inside the city limits. So why is that? Why are my land taxes twice as much as my daughter's land taxes that lives inside her, inside the county? But I, my house will burn to the ground if it catches on fire, just like their house burnt to the ground. And maybe children will die in my house. So are we going to do, I don't know anything about the plan, how politics works, but I don't know anything about politics. I just know how to live in life to life. They've lived there since the 60s. What is going to happen? What are we going to do? It's a town full of elderly people.
With all due respect...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be...
No, no, no.
But it is a miracle no one died in that fire.
With all due respect, for some of the questions that you've already asked, there are people at the office that will help you, explain things to you, and not be envious when I say this, but we're sticking to the variance. So I mean, you're for...
I don't know anything about rules, how this goes.
No, that's fine. I was being very, I was being very polite to explain it. We just, we have, we have a time window. Everybody gets five minutes to speak, and it's on the variance.
I appreciate that.
That's all. It's just to keep the, the meeting...
So I understand, I appreciate it. Just for the record, I would love to be able to put a mobile home right there, and I really hope that something is done with the fire department in Dixie.
And thank you very much. Thank you. That would conclude the public hearing, and we'll call the Brooks County Board of Commissioner regular monthly meeting Monday, the 2nd, 2022, at 5:27. We will have Mr. Rodney Teneri come up and pray for us, please.
Father God, I thank you for the opportunity to come here today and watch our leaders in action, Father. And I just pray, Father, that you would just, you would be upon them, that you would turn their hearts in a direction, that you would have them to go in light of your word. And Father, I just pray that you would just, you would just bless this meeting, Father God, in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Let us pray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the minutes of the regular monthly meeting, April 4th of 2022, and also the special call in Zoom meeting on April 11th, 2022, and the special call and work session, executive session, on April 25th of 2022. May I have a motion with the board?
Mr. Chairman, you want them in order? You want them in order?
That's fine.
Our motion that we would approve the minutes, regular monthly meeting, April 4th, 2022, our special call meeting in Zoom, April 11th, 2022, special call meeting, work session, executive session, April 23rd, 2022.
Y'all have heard the motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second, any more discussion? Anybody opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. We have invited guest tonight, Mr. Simpson. If you could...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. You're going to amend the agenda for executive session?
Oh, yes. We need to, we need to amend the agenda for executive session tonight. If I can get a motion, please.
I still move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, this is out of order. I'm two rows back, and I can't hear you, sir. I'm sure the folks in the back can have an execution, but I...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, there was a motion to have an executive session. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Anybody opposed? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. That, is that better, Mr. Herb?
No, sir. It's not only all over here, it's the echo. It's not through the studio. I'm sorry, Chairman.
Take some, Mr. Chairman.
Testing.
Can you hear me? If you speak like that, you gotta hear me. Start to come up.
Maybe it's your mic. Testing, testing.
No, sir.
Can you hear me?
Now.
Okay.
Hear it now?
You're coming up a little bit.
You gotta speak close.
It looks like some of the lights...
We just have to kiss the mic. Mr. Chairman, you've almost got to kiss the mic.
Stephanie, can you hear us out there where you're at?
It's fine.
Okay.
And I apologize, sir.
Oh, no. No. You don't need to.
It's definitely, could you hear me?
No, I can't.
You hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. How about, how about me? Can you hear me? All right.
That's good.
Mr. Simpson, if you could come on up and please speak into the mic.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Thomas Simpson. I work, I'm the outreach coordinator for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Rental Assistance Program.
Thomas, is your button green?
Yes.
Okay. You might need to lean into the mic, sir.
Yeah. Is that, is that better? I don't want to swallow the mic or anything, but... So I am with the Rental Assistance Program with the state of Georgia. What that is, is the program that was instituted by the CARES Act, by the federal government, is, the purpose of it is to assist landlords in recouping unpaid rent that went unpaid during the COVID-19 pandemic. Also, the dual purpose is, of course, to keep those tenants of those landlords from being evicted from their homes. And so my purpose of being here this evening was just to make sure everyone in Brooks County was aware of the program. I have some information. I will not go over it tonight in an interesting time, obviously, but I would give it to you all if you don't mind. We have... We have informational flyers that are in English and also in Spanish, and I'd be happy to give that to you. I live in the area, so I am local and somewhat, anyone that needs, has any questions, of course, can contact me locally without having to contact someone else in the Atlanta area. That is, I don't know if you heard any of that, what I just said, but that is basically what I was here for today. I know if you want a longer presentation or some kind of formal presentation, go ahead and do that when your time allows. And that is really all that I have. If you don't mind, I'll just give this package to you all.
Yes, please.
And, Mr. Simpson, we'll, we'll put a link on the website for you as well when we release the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Moving down to the reports from the committee and departments. Ms. Lewis, can you come on down, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the board. My name is Deborah Lewis. I'm a new hire with Brooks County zoning office. Just wanted to give you all a brief report that I'm getting settled in. I wanted to give a shout out to my superior, Ms. Jessica McKinnon, and Mr. Matthew McConney of the roads department. They've both been very helpful and accommodating to get me situated here. Just a little bit about what I'm doing. I'm taking phone calls, answering zoning questions. Zoning is about land use and so, and also complaints. I've had four complaints thus far, and I went out to each of them today, and so I'll be contacting those owners to get those issues resolved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jason? And I'm going to let you say your last name so I don't butcher it up.
Yes, sir.
And you've got a good, strong voice.
Good evening, Chairman and the board. My name is Jason Montesano. Hello. I'm the permits and inspections agent. And me and Ms. Lewis will be working together close with the zoning and the permits and inspections to make everything go smoother. Right now, I'm dealing with just, just trying to get everything back to like a normal state, I guess you would say. Everybody's been really kind, though, that I've worked with so far and everybody that I've met in the county, so things are moving forward pretty good, I would say. And it's just going to take a little time to get everything to go smoothly, but we'll just do, keep doing the best that we can. Anybody can reach out for me anytime for anything.
Well, your offices, so y'all, both of y'all's offices out there at the road department, Johnson Short?
Yes, sir.
And I know y'all just got new county phones, and the numbers are fresh, so if anybody needs to contact either one of them, you can give, you can also contact the county office at 263-5561. And if you want to give your number, do you have your county number on you by chance?
Yes, sir.
The road department, sir, would be the best way for them to get ahold of them because they are, they are keeping track of their work orders.
Okay, well, I'll take, so call 263-8817. Is that right, Mr. Conley?
That's right.
263-8817. Thank you very, thank you. Chief Calhoun?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. Seven months ago, you brought me on board to rebuild your fire station. We broke this project down into three phases. After seven months, we've about accomplished phase one. We still have some outstanding areas. Not realizing the depth of the problems that we were facing, we had an idea, once we got into it, we found out it was worse than what we had thought. So trying to rebuild it has become quite an ordeal. However, we were able to accomplish some 26 items on the list during phase one. We have 35 on the list until we go, and we're within 75 to 90% of completing those items to close out phase one. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any, any questions from the board?
I guess the elephant in the room question is, what's the man of Dixie?
I'm sorry.
Manning for Dixie?
Dixie is a totally volunteer fire department. The Jackson, we have three paid firefighters in the county 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they're stationed at the Jackson Road Station. A response to Dixie would be 19 to 20 minutes easy from Jackson Road.
I guess, I mean, how many volunteers do we have attached to that?
We have 20, 25, 20, 26 volunteers, but only five of them are suppression firefighters that can actually go in and fight fires.
Chief, I believe Mr. Larko's question is, how many do we have at Dixie?
We have zero at Dixie.
We haven't had any at Dixie previous to you? Correct.
The only man stationed we have in the county is three paid firefighters on Jackson Road, and they respond countywide, so they do have a long response.
And can you explain, just for the group, can you mention something, suppression versus support?
The state recognizes suppression firefighters. Those are people that can actually go in and fight fires. The majority of our volunteers are support firefighters that cannot put air packs on and turn that gear and go in and fight fires. So that's what we're trying to build now, a good suppression base to get those suppression numbers up. The state requires us to have 28 suppression firefighters. With the 10 paid you have and the five volunteers, we have 15 suppression firefighters for accounting this size. But we've gone other things, like bringing part-time suppression people on. Next year's budget, looking at maybe more people, and hopefully get those numbers up to where we, or where we need to be.
Chief Calhoun?
Yes, sir.
Question by Mr. Linares, to Mr. Linares. I spoke with Jessica, I took the concern that you asked her a few minutes ago, and we are, we are working on that Dixie fire station. We're trying to get that Dixie fire station, he's the one side of town. We have already spoken to her, her and I just need to get together. That's why I told you I need you to phone them, okay?
Since that fire in Dixie, while we're talking about it, I did have, I do have one volunteer that is on duty down there from eight, from nine in the morning till five every afternoon, he's there during that period. But that's only five days a week during the day.
When that fire took place in Dixie, you only had one volunteer, Dr. Jeffrey Williams, lived by me, and I talked to Jeffrey. Jeffrey's a farmer. So what happened, so he had to be able to get off the truck, right, and go get his, his, you know, truck, and then come all the way back to Dixie. So that's what happened. You only had one, one person out there. We're for this, like Dr. Colton said, district, that is, I mean, district, that served district five, that fire department served district five and district three in the area well. And so what we are doing, we are working very hard, and with the fire chief, we're trying to put one in Hickory Head area. You see that?
Our house is smoking. We thought there was a fire before, a volunteer fire department. They, nobody, we've not heard a joke today that it was closed.
I mean, my parents have been living in Dixie for 10 years, and we, Deborah, we've seen a person at the fire department, any active, you know, there's no evidence that there's been any fire in years. How, how do you volunteer to be a part of, if we can get people in the community to see if people are volunteers, but they're not suppressing volunteers, like, what does that help?
And in response to that, I can say, if anyone here is interested in serving as a volunteer fire personnel, Chief Calhoun would gladly talk to you, and I'm sure that once the certifications are completed by those people, he can work with EMS to have anyone in a, in a certain zone or certain regions toned out to, to respond. And I'm pretty sure, Chief, we'd be able to get that taken care of.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to work with anybody who wants to volunteer.
Chief, I'd like to say one thing. So you said, how many suppression firefighters we have as of now?
We have 15 suppression firefighters.
15 now?
Yes, sir.
And how many did you have before you started?
Five.
Five. So it is growing?
Yes, sir.
We're building it up?
Yes, sir.
Because my heart go out for the family. You know, y'all remember, in 2010, I lost my house, my 12. I was on Hickory Head. She was, I was at the county commission meeting when it got caught on fire. We lost everything. My wife was able to get, you know, my kid out, and my daughter broke the woman to get the dog out, and the dog jumped in her arm. My, right, my heart go out, but we, we lost, and we're military, you know, traveling around the world and had everything and lost everything. So, but we are, we're hoping that that never happen again, and we're trying to build a fire department in the county. We do that, and my heart really go out for you all. This is really good.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Chief. Our road superintendent supervisor, Mr. Matt Conley, could you come on up, please?
Good evening. In front of you right there, I have two things. The, on the backside is the calling log, on the daily calling log, if someone's called in and reported something to the road concern to the county. So just for you guys to be able to go through and look at, normally how I coordinate mine next day, besides the land work that we already have scheduled. This month, we had a lot of dry weather, so we graded, we were able to grade 266 roads versus last month, when we only did 85. So good weather, had good results. We got three ditchers now in the county that are working, and we're, now we're ditching, we've been ditching all month. So that's been, we got a new grader that you guys had previously ordered. We just got that last Friday. So we'll have three ditchers and three blades going at one time. We did... So we put in, we put in four, three driveways this month, took care of 11 beaver dams. We did seven, seven clean and repaired culverts. We've got 725 tons of lime rock to start putting down on these roads. We're currently working our sidearm now, we have one sidearm for the whole county, so it's just going to start. It hasn't been moving, so now it's going to be moving, so we have a dedicated operator to it daily. Someone will be in it. We removed 125 trees this month. Or 127 trees. The sign repaired. We did 23 new road signs and, like, and 17 different, like, stop signs and cautionary signs throughout the county. Currently working on trying to get like I-Works, some kind of integrated maintenance management system so we can track our cost and where we go, what we do, what's more trackable. We got two mini excavators running, one, one's kind of at the end of its life, so it's not as strong as the other one, so we're trying to put two culvert, two culvert crews together a day. We're, we're getting the pickups ramped up, you know, with the normal caution lights on. And there is no money for the, for the tornado that went through. There's no money from FEMA to collect all the trees that went down. So we're going to have to do that some other plan and get them trees taken care of.
Mr. Matt, I just want to tell you what a, what a bang-up job that road department did. I always call it the hush mouth though, because, but that's, that's Mr. Hushmouth's daughter and going, boy, you guys did a bang-up job. I tell you the truth. You know, the gentleman that I was talking to, he was saying, oh, you know, said, but I messed up my, 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 my ditch because they mow, it's why I have to mow all the way down. But what a bang-up job.
Thank you, sir.
It was, it was a beautiful, beautiful job.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I know when I send Matt something, or I call the road department, they respond quickly, so I definitely appreciate that. I'm glad to see the manning's increased. Just to let everybody know that when Matt, Matt, can you tell what the personnel was when you came on board?
We had 11, then down to eight, and now we're at 15.
Okay. So... So now we have more operators, more...
Absolutely. We have a couple more truck drivers, more, a couple more truck drivers and a couple more operators. But before, we kind of, we kind of run, you have more equipment than you have people, so it's nice to be able to put people in what we call yard art, you know what I mean? If you don't have any people, it's just going to sit in the yard, so. Now, outside on the road, we're going through things, so.
So I would like to reiterate, since we have a room full of people today, that the road department number is 263-8817. And if you have a complaint or an issue with a road, if you would call the road department first, because Mr. Matt has a process in place for a work order system, that if you call in, it is written down, it's taken the information, it is timestamped, and believe you me, it is timestamped when it's repaired. So if that will be your first line to call, I'm sure your concern will... What's the time to turn around, Mr. Herb? One day? One day?
One day.
If it's possible.
You can approach them one day.
If it's, if, so please afford them the opportunities, and let's, I really think he is doing a jam-up job, and we need to say thank you and welcome to Brooks County. We're glad to have you, and we don't want you to go anymore.
Yeah, Ms. Jessica would like to say something.
I, I just have one last comment. With the collaboration that you and I have been able to have... to have, meeting almost every morning, your willingness to sit down with me and us talk through things and challenges, it is a testament to the quality of your work and the initiative that you've taken, because even through the conversations, just conversations, just you and I have having, I don't have to do direct, nothing, we share ideas, we bounce things off of each other, and this, I mean, to have a work order system and say it, but to show and be able to provide this kind of data, along with the chief, which you have both been able to actually prove to this board, this, resounding, like, this shows the quality of the work and the delivery that you guys are putting out on the roads, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Matt, and I would like to say a little something, a lot of people, since they're here, and if I get it wrong, tell me, so, Matt took a hard hit when he got here, because everybody found out that he was from California, so.
He's really from South equipment.
Yes.
Yeah, he really is now, so he's, he's one of us, but tell me if I get anything wrong, but twenty-five years worked for California DOT, up there where the Woodbridge wine is made around Lake Tahoe, they do have dirt roads, a lot of people saying he had no experience on dirt roads, but he does, so, but you were over nine counties.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of people will say, well, what brought him to Quicken, he used to teach a girl softball team, and he used to travel a lot and come over around the Thomasville area, so he knew this area quite well, has a daughter that's fixing to graduate next, no, actually, this month, Monday, has a veterinarian, and has two other young daughters at school, and one, I think, in Thomas Tech or something, or?
Just Auburn, Alabama, Mark Brooks.
Okay, but anyway, we're lucky to have him, because I tell you what, it was, we were very fortunate to get him, because it was very hard, when you're trying to hire people during the pandemic, it was really, really hard, so Matt, I really, my hat's off to you, and I appreciate the hard work you've been doing, and I just follow, some of the county employees are here tonight, and I'd like to thank y'all very much too for what y'all been doing, and thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. DeWitt, if you come on up, and I'm gonna give you this good microphone.
And Stephanie, before you start, just for clarification, this is just your department report, your budget request will come later, okay?
Okay, so what we have for you is, first of all, is the minutes from our March fourth meeting, which was our, post-October, it was county economic development summit that involved all of our elected and appointed officials, our community, and it was quite a success, we had a recording visuals, and every municipality, our county government was represented, our departments was represented very well there, so we had a very in-depth recount, and I, we had sent that via email, but I wanted you all to have it in physical copy, so that you could review that, and then as well, our next steps going forward, so to say the date, June tenth will be our next meeting, our March fourth meeting was to set the foundation for what will become our quarterly meeting, and the county, you've been so generous, so allows to use our new act building, our beautiful new event center to host our next meeting, and it will be open as well to the community, we want everybody to be involved, we want everybody to know what it is we're doing as we move forward, and the purpose of this is to create a strategic economic development plan, we're now through the comprehensive plan, and we've, now this has been submitted for the public, but we're developing a strategic economic development plan so that we can visit this quarterly, you have benchmarking tools, that we can come back and revisit, all of us together, as we move forward, so that we're not coming back in five years going, well, did we hit that target, or did we not, or, you know, we want to stay on target, we want to make sure we hit those goals, and so we'll, we'll develop this together, the development authority has been working diligently with all of our municipalities, among the agenda, we have Morbin this month, that was in Morbin last month, and they called, Barbara and Morbin's on the same night, so we're working very closely with our municipal governments and in our county, and we wanted to let you know that we are doing that as we move forward, and so our homework is on here, you know, just listing a couple of critical items, because as we develop this plan, we want to make sure that it's feasible, that it's attainable, and so that we can execute this and keep moving forward, and that's really what I have on that, and then also to let you know that we are currently working, we have six projects, six prospects that we're working with right now in economic development around the counties, we have four within industrial park and two elsewhere in the county, and as those in the foreword, I'll be able to share more of that, but they could be significant investments into our county and significant number of jobs as well, so we are moving forward, we have a lot of eyes on us, and I'm so happy to see us moving together, and all of us moving, you know, in the same direction, so that's it, I just want to thank you. Anything else, any questions?
Y'all, y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Stephanie.
We have the old business where we were talking about the Brooks County Historical Preservation Society ordinance.
Okay, this ordinance has been sponsored, it was sponsored last month, this ordinance is to establish a historical preservation board in Brooks County, and what this does is it makes available federal and state funds for the preservation of historical property within the county, so it forms a board, it also outlines the limitations of the board, and it's consistent with the, the model ordinance that was passed by the state, subject to a couple of amendments that we've had over the month, and that pertain mostly to the initial term of board members, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, this is substantially in the same form as it was when sponsored, it's ready for board action tonight, and that's a pleasure of the board.
I need the motion of the board.
Mr. Chairman, just in order, I make a motion that we approve the Brooks County Historical Preservation Society ordinance.
Y'all heard the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion, anybody oppose, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We also have the county facility usage agreement, I'll let our administrator talk on that.
Board, the motion last month was to allow the county use, facility usage agreement to lay on the table for thirty days, it has present, been presented to the board as ideas or for a scope for usage on fees on the facilities, so I am visiting it again this evening, the only additional thing that had come up in the meantime was that requiring a certificate of event insurance for individuals wanting to use the facility for full-on events, that would include catering, that was recommended by our insurance company, so if the board, I guess I would just need to know the pleasure of the board on regarding the event facility usage agreement, and how you want to proceed.
Y'all heard that, y'all want to make a motion tonight?
So it's my understanding that as this sits right now, we don't have that taken care of in this?
Don't have, no, sir, it would, it would need to be as part of the motion to include.
All right, well, I, I'll, I mean, as far as discussion, I think that we need to set this on the table for another thirty days to make sure that the document is complete before we move on.
If that is what the board wants to do, we can do that, but I just want to remind the board that I am not ready currently, without any kind of guidance on fee, so I don't know how you want me to proceed with that, for consistency sake, and for allowing people to actually use the facility.
A suggestion, this being a live working, if the attorney may be a live working agreement, so if we did make a motion tonight, it can be amended if there was anything that comes up.
That's correct, you, you may do that, there's nothing wrong with the board passing policy, and then amending it later if it sees fit.
That's just a suggestion for the board.
And just for discussion, I did have some questions come up in regards to the use of farmer's market, could you explain the intentions there, I mean, does that, if someone wanted to rent the space and go down there or required to be there for, for example, seven AM to four PM on Saturday, the entirety of the time, even if they were to sell out at noon, they still are required to stay till four?
That's the discretion of the board, this was just a recommendation, however the board would like to proceed with using that facility, that is up to the board.
And while you did bring it up, just so everybody knows here, we got a full house, a lot of people want to know about the farmer's market, for years it stayed dilapidated and rundown, and nobody didn't do anything to manage it, so the county ended up investing a little bit of the money to try to fix it up, in that process, we found out that the city and the county own that farmer's market together, but we are waiting for the city to basically sign, sign it over to the county, because the county's gonna manage it, a lot of people might have had some negativity on that, the reason why it was just so rundown, and it was being pretty messed up, and we, we don't want it to get like that back again, so that's why we're just trying to fix it up, put a gate on it, so that way we can monitor it, that's all. Anything else?
No, it's just brought to my attention tonight, so I'm not going to look at that.
So I guess the, the urgency of this, we've got this policy that we do need to do something with, the longer we don't do anything with it, we don't have a policy, but if there's something that y'all want to add, or need to change, it can be done.
Mr. Chairman, if the currency, if we can go ahead and approve, and we can amend if we needed to?
Yeah, I believe.
If we need to, then we can go ahead and approve it as it is, and then if we have need to, we can go ahead and amend it, because we have the amount, we don't, then we can't have, no, we can't use anything, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Well, I'm all for motion, if we go ahead and accept it as it is, and we need to, then we can amend it, that's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cody, y'all heard the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'll, I'll second that.
Have a second, any more discussion?
Mr. Cody, would you like to add to your motion to go ahead and then what the insurance company has recommended in this, in this agreement here?
Well, based on what the attorney said, you know, so is that not included in as well?
What are you, you're referring to the?
The recommendation by the insurance, certificate of insurance?
Yes.
For events?
Well, he could include that in his motion, or offer a subsequent motion in that regard, if that's what your desire is.
Okay, well, that's, the board is out, I would include that in my motion, that insurance company included, okay?
Okay, so if we could have Mr. Maxwell rescind the second and restate your motion, please?
Mr. Conley, proceed.
Well, I'll second that.
You rescind your second?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Cody, would you please restate your motion, and include the insurance?
Yeah, of course, we would accept the proposal that we had for us tonight, as stated as you would like for us to do, and amend it, add the insurance policy with it, and amend it if needed to.
All right, y'all heard the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second, any more discussion?
Apologize here, my discussion is that this being a document that we're voting on, we are voting that this is a living document, so it's, it's, it's a document that actually will be amendable, not just when the need arises, but when we identify an issue, so. Just to make sure that's put out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, so, any more discussion, anybody oppose, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. The timber ordinance, if you may, Mr. Kim.
Thanks, sir, the timber ordinance, the timber harvesting ordinance was sponsored a month ago, a proposed ordinance was given to us in draft form, there were, there was input by the tax successor, there was also input by Mr. Owens, and we incorporated what we could, Mr. Owens requested an increased fee for harvesting penalties, however, we were restricted by statute and not able to do that, the statute limits the penalty, and sets that, so upon Commissioner Larko's recommendation, we use terminology that just references the statute, so as the state changes that number, if they do, our ordinance will already be flexible and adapting to that, so those are the primary edits that have been made, this is amending an existing ordinance, so what the board may do tonight is adopt it, and we have it set in draft form to become effective in thirty days, which will allow us to publish and let us at the Superior Court Clerk's office, because it is amended in ordinance, once that is completed, the effect of it is already set in here, so it'll come back before the board for ratification at that point, just to make sure that we check all of our constitutional and statutory obligations.
So, can you, yeah, just, all right, so y'all heard the attorney, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt this, this ordinance change? Or ordinance amendment, yes.
All right, y'all heard the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second, any more discussion, any oppose, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Coming on down to two business, which we heard in the meeting, the open hearing, I'm sorry, earlier, is, was the players with the board of the special exception on the fund, on the family fund event venue for the community health quarter.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special exception, petition by Ethan Britton to establish a family fund event venue to be held quarterly.
Thank you, ma'am, y'all heard the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second, any more discussion? Any oppose, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. The variance for the special use permit for Mr. Charles Swilly, I mean, I'd like a motion for.
Mr. Chairman, in order of motion, I would accept that request by the parents through the development.
to the development of zoning laws to a live place of manufacturing home in an R1 district.
Did y'all hear that?
You made a motion to approve?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I know based on the information that we heard from the commission, I all for motion that we would approve the request for the marriage to develop each day of the zoning laws to a live place of manufacturing home in an R1 district.
All right, y'all heard the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, any discussion?
I just want to make for clarification, I'd like for clarification, that we are approving the recommendation of the planning and zoning with the stipulation in there that the mobile home is to be removed upon Mr. and Mrs. Swilly no, no longer occupying that residence.
Well, based on information, yes, commission action.
I think we just made it in the minutes that they had put that stipulation.
Based on it, yes, yes. But, they got a real particular 102.
Certainly has.
And we'll, we'll have a new board and a new board will know what's going on.
So, any more, you're good? So, any more discussion? Any, anybody opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Moving on down to the appointed board members of Brooks County Historical Preservation Society.
Do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, it's a discussion.
Mr. Kim? Yes, sir, right. Modified, I've been getting calls this afternoon and that that particular board is waiting for to feel what we have to say tonight, but they've been working very hard, and what we want to do, because these people was the one who really, really put their back into it, they're trying to be able to, and everything, like I said, started, started from the Washington Street Gym, and as soon as the board is put together, right, they have, just told me tonight that they do have funding, they have some funding that is coming in, and a lot of you all know these people, you understand, they are some great people, you understand, Dr. Mrs. Horn, MD, Jaclyn Hopple, retired Yacht Club, Ms. Jennifer Edwards, fantastic individual, and Mrs. Nasak Machili, known the first name, everybody know that, and I want to be able to serve maybe just one year on that, because I work, we work real hard together, I kind of know them, and then after this board, when they kind of put everything together, you know, like I said, and then Donna Boe down there, she really, you know, they can suggest that the county commissioner, maybe we can be able to take their place, so I hope that, I hope we don't hold them up, because we're, and what we need to do, we need to go on here and put this in place, you understand, so that we can be able to get funding, and the more funding that we can get, you know what I mean, for that gym, as I told y'all before, we need to be able to free up that ag building, the ag building, all the events and stuff like that, that's where all the events can take place, at that gym down there, right? Instead of having large activities in the, in the new ag building, we can have it at the gym. Thank you.
And did you have the question, sir?
I thought these names were just being presented us tonight and that we were going to afford the community as well to present names, just like we have done in the past. That's what our discussion was in the work session last week, that we would be, are you asking for a vote on these things? I have nothing negative, derogatory, or anything, but I thought we were going to receive applications for any one that would like to serve on this board, was that, was that not our discussion at our work session?
By the time, what we need to do, we need to start the board up since, since X. We can't wait two or three more months for now, that's one of the reasons why, the board, you know, that these people work, has been working with the historic society and the historic society know these people, so in order to be able to start it up, maybe next time around, you'll be able to do that, okay? But I don't want to be able to hold money up if there's money out there, you understand, that it comes from the historic society. They're, 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 they have bypassed the state, they're on their national level, people, and the national level, and they have worked with the school board, you understand, Mr. Cunningham, Dr. Reed, and all of them have worked for the people in the courthouse, and they have got all this information really together, working with the boys and girl club to get this information together, so we ain't got time now really here to be able for the county, because who do you know? Who do you know out there that can serve on this board better than these people, you understand, than for these people? Because we thought taking the application will be, will be way back down in the office, so I suggest to the board, just go on here and vote these particular people in, you see that, right? And then, like I said, I'd like to serve one year with them, and then we can move off the board and even replace somebody else on there, but we need to get going, thank you.
Mr. Mattswell, I'm going to ask the lawyer about procedure of, of the appointments, considerate?
Yeah, with all due respect, I, I understand the desire, now, it's in existence, as of tonight, to get moving. One recommendation, though, is, because each commissioner is appointing somebody, so I would recommend that each commissioner be able to interview vet people who are going to be on the board, and second, we need to ensure that they meet the criteria, and that is Brooks County resident has a stated interest in, in the subject matter of the board, so that's just a recommendation, that's a policy that's in the ordinance that has been passed tonight, and so I think each commissioner will need to be ready to appoint somebody, or at least have a pool of candidates to vote on for his district.
So now, you have to justify, the name that we have, that the committee, that these people have really put it together, do you want the board, want the board, if it's possible, if we want to appoint these people with the stipulation, you understand, that the board sit down with them and talk with them, each one of them?
That, that's my recommendation, and plus, we also will have to draw lots because we have staggered terms, so each commissioner's going to have to draw lots to see which initial term is going to be for which duration. So my recommendation is, it's really up to the board, because it is, it is you all who are empowered to appoint this board, but again, it's going to be individual appointments from each commissioner.
So, the four people that, that really, that is listed here, okay, they can, when, once they bring their board together, they can choose who going to be, who going to serve for, we, I know the county commissioner did one year, but the other woman served for two years, who served for three, who can serve for that, do they do that on their own, or you're saying that the county commissioner have to be able to do that?
Yes, sir, the, the county commissioners, at the time of appointment, at the time of appointment, what's in the ordinance is that the commissioners draw lots, and that that individual commissioner's appointment will serve for the stated amount of time in the lot drawn.
The only thing the county commissioner got to do, is decide, select these four people, these four, and you can, you can decide exactly who's who, you can say if you want, one can be three years, one can be two, one can be so forth, but what you're saying here now is that you can take these four names, forget about the county commissioner, and you, and you're going to be able to, let me ask y'all something, do any of the county commissioners got anybody in mind that they would like to put on this board? Do any of the county commissioners got?
I, I haven't had anybody from my district expressing interest.
You, you have anybody in mind?
I have.
Ms. Mari, do you have anybody in mind that is qualified to be able to serve on this board and that has, has already worked with the historic society?
I feel very strongly that if it's someone in my area or my district that is qualified to serve, had I known I needed to have a name tonight, I probably could have had one by tonight, but I've not been afforded that opportunity, so for me to sit here and say I do not have anyone in my district that is not qualified, I have no knowledge of that.
Do you have anybody in this board?
Not in my district, I do know that one lady that, Ms. Edwards, that I believe might be in your district, Mr. Larko, I think she, she had wanted to, gave interest in it, but no one.
Does it live in the?
Used to work for the Free Press.
Right, but she don't live, she don't live in Brooks County, does she?
Yeah, she, oh yeah, she's on, yes, ma'am.
She's on, yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Has been.
Right, okay. Mr. Coe? Yes, sir. Okay. So, what we're talking about is district, you see that, in order to be able to get the thing going, is that, I think that what we need to do, we need to be able to start whatever the board, because that's the audience, and what we, we put it together, the bylaws, you understand, if we want to really just stick to that, if you really want to be able to start all over again, and to be able to, for, for me to be able to tell these people, you understand, they're waiting tonight what the board has decided really to do, and what we are talking about tonight, Ms. Mari, their hard work is going down the drain.
All due respect, Mr. Maxwell, I, I can appreciate the hard effort, the hard work and effort that they have put forward. What I am asking you is when we met last week and set this agenda, that we were going to approve, it was decided on then that we would approve the ordinance tonight, and then in 30 days, we would appoint board members to this board, that would be at the June meeting, that would allow anyone that is interested to serve on this board, to submit their names, or for us as individual commissioners to find someone in our district that may be willing to serve. I, I think we should afford the opportunity to everyone out there. It sounds to me that this, and I am not against any name on this list right here, but there may be other citizens as well that would like the opportunity to serve, so the ordinance was put in place tonight, and therefore, we should have 30 days to allow someone to make application to serve, so that we as a board could vet everyone.
But I understand, what a decision to the board?
I make a motion that we wait till our June regular session meeting to appoint members to the historical preservation board.
Y'all heard the motion, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Do we have any discussion? Any opposed? All, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can we, sorry, do it again, I just heard two votes.
So, could you ask for the vote again on the two? We had a motion from I, a second from Mr. Larko, now I ask for any discussion? Anybody opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lee Larko said aye. Mari said aye, I didn't say anything. Mr. La, Mr.?
Okay, so we had two.
So we have no one opposing?
Ain't got no problem, we can wait until June.
As it stands right now, who is going to really, for each board member?
The only, the only, the only, the only thing I want to say is that if you go out there in the community and you find someone, you understand, that's right, that is less qualified than these people, so I'm going to have these people really to do a resume, they're going to turn their resume back into the county, to the county, right? I don't care what district they live in, if all of them coming out of district four, what happened, that'd be fine, but now, we're not going to go out there and get somebody that don't know anything, you understand, about the historic society and have no contact with, see, these people already have contact with the people in Washington, they've been talking, and all of a sudden, you get somebody new, you know, for, because that is what the county commissioner really want, so let's be very careful now, so like I said, what we need to do is make sure that we interview, have these people send their resume in, right? If they really want to come before the board, you understand, at a special call meeting or in June, these are the ones that we need to point any point, okay? These are the ones we need to point any point. Now, if we want to go ahead on the way to June, put application out there, take application for people in the community that want to serve on the historic society, that's fine, boy, that's good, I have no problem with that, but just remember that these four people, you understand, is going to have, you understand, a front row seat.
Mr.? With me being the chair, and I would like to make a motion, do I give the, turn the gavel over to Mr. Maxwell, that I can make a motion, or how we go by that?
Well, I think you can state your position.
Okay.
But, no, I don't, I believe the motion comes from somebody else.
Well, I'd like to state my position for everything. Mr. Maxwell, I, I agree with you, and Lee and I, I do agree with you as well, if it were me, but I'm not making the motion because I can't be in the chair, I would just say, table, table it, and even though we have the people that's already listed that started it, go ahead and do the, you know, file, and give us the opportunity, and then we can, workshop meeting, which will be this month, we can have those names discuss it, and then in the first Monday of the month, in Ju, in June, we can then make the decision and the vote on that, on, on what we have in front of us.
So, right now, we have a failed motion, so if anything further, we need a new motion.
Okay.
It's, I could be wrong, but it sounds like the same motion could be made again, I mean, I don't, I don't think what you said was too far off, but I'll leave that to the board's discretion, but we would need a new motion either way.
Okay, but what's the pleasure of the board will start first?
I, I make a motion that we table this for 30 days and, and gather a list of people who are interested in this and revisit it on the next, in the next calendar meeting.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand that better. So y'all heard the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Cody, second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, the appointment for the Georgia, South Georgia area agency and agent council, advisory council?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Lee Larko to the South Georgia area agent.
I'll second, each suggestion, I'm going to say aye. What happens to the head of the conference?
Yes, sir, this gentleman called up in the workshop regarding our current health challenges for employees coming of ways, and discussion, feel that there is an interest in, or taking additional votes beyond Tinker, we've had Tinker for two years now, it was explained that due to our fiscal year, the way all the renewal periods come too, essentially too late for us to issue an order fee, and I reminded the board that that was And I reminded the board that that was what ensued when we actually, um, received quotes for, when Taylor came on. And, and Taylor was our, um, agent for benefits, or broker, I should say. Um, and at that time, the board had to permit me to be able to, um, go outside of the process and make a motion to allow me to just receive quotes. And that was the process that we did, um, to, uh, entertain and give health insurance. So that was brought again, um, and again, as a reminder, of, of when we was committed and we did start receiving reviews from Taylor, um, this past week. Um, I, I reminded the board that's how they wanted to proceed. I really have to receive a motion in order to do that versus, um, sending out an order fee for such.
Thank you, just, what's the point of the word?
Chairman, I have a question. Since the first, you decided that you're setting up a role, yeah, which I was. It's, we did. Now, we're figuring out, not that. The way is our, um, and the law will be, January, um, three months at a time. June first, when it's effective, July first. So we go through, through, from the idea, when we actually deal with you, um, your application for the new employees, that I have seen to, um, determine business, and July first is when it's effective. Okay, I will talk to some of the workers that should, and I might give you the statement, and I saw that I may have been reminded, and tell them that at the beginning, to make sure when you show these quotes or the board think, just to have the ready, that we, I have our own rights, it's natural to do whatever we do with this, with our, with our rights, I should say, one. So I think we have to give them opportunity to run a, for our, for our upcoming renewal. Well, my concern, Patricia, my concern is, we're passive, but we just got the renewals. So we named to have discussion about the possibility of changing our, our period for insurance. And I believe, um, the clerk, Patricia, actually offered me some historical information that the board has done that previous, that there was an issue with this previously, and, um, the board had to have a conversation, is that correct, Patricia? So, so I think it's always a way to play issue on renewal for the clerk and the brokers. I mean, that is what Paul and Trucky told us, and that is, you have to know this route when we switch from Paul and Trucky to Taylor.
But we, we never had a check.
Yes, and I hear you, so.
I, I can talk definitely, what they will learn about, or best, that's what I think we need to do it. Make sure, even if you have to give them a bunch of, but they give you, give quotes, not, or anything, that would be provided, your parts, that would be ready, so that we can act with the, 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 the. Just thanks to you, it's a lot of, for the mention.
Well, if I can offer some additional, just for the sake of being, with the transparent board, I have three brokers that are ready to give us quotes, if that's how the board wants to proceed the scene. But I, I, I need, I need to have the clear one from the board.
But I think that, well, that, that's the, for, the, the. If we go, is that gonna be, uh, pro, pro June, or?
Be able to personally, you know, to do what, to do number three, we're required to publish that for three days. For, for, for.
So we're not, we're just gonna get more?
We're not gonna do more.
So our deal is just the focus for the month?
That's right, for that's the very part.
So our convention, to, for the time you get, to get funds from, to help the clients. Just that, well, that's what, that's where our rights come in.
Look for the sign, like, which is for my claim, huh? Okay.
I have a motion, Ted, you stood on the council, you're fine, I have a second, any questions?
Yes. I'm just like, um, telling you, um, let me know the, the, uh, D R P, that we're getting, oh, that's the material we are, uh. So R R P is a part of the process, there's, there are ways to sustain R R P process, which is very impractical, which is important to be, making through that process, and then finding them, uh, for, 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 such as, basically, a camera, however, the board must pay. Just to go on, you have, only purpose about sustaining, um, the board, and it's all, to change the status quo. And, and, I think that, uh, for R R P, that, that, yeah. That's for the clarification, there is, is, on what we're doing, why we're doing it, just to make sure that we, we're, we're.
All right, so, yeah, yeah, I'll be on the side. Got a second? He works good. He, I hear, I'm gonna say aye. Aye, aye, aye. And we wouldn't touch it, the question.
Yes, sir, um, I, we have started, we've begun our budget process, um, I have initiated these, with, um, the department heads and report director to me, as well as constitutional officers, um, and local officials. Uh, I have yet to meet with the proxy of army this morning, we want to reschedule this calendar. Um, but we, I have also, at this time, that, reached out to best described as, as local services. So, um, those that we found, you know, through supplement, um, rent, uh, so, so library, um, reached out to, um, back extension, um, to fill the authority express without having reached out to them to discuss, um, budget request. So for that, that, those areas that I did reach out to, the only two that I vote for, receiving confirmation, when I did hear from three, Mr. Um, Mr. Scott Boxon said he was happy with this budget, we can work as so. Um, but, um, Stanley Williams with government authority and Hoshgami and back extension, the two of them want to come up and discuss their, um, request, uh, further beyond, um, what they are currently being funded. Um, and again, just for more, this is purely for discussion, to hear their justifications and reasoning and wanting to increase their budgets outside of, um, their army set funding. Um, we will need, or do the same practice with the department heads and council shops, like the officials that are expressing, I mean, to ask for more, um, compared to where they were at. Um, just as a reminder, when budget discussions, and so last year, we talked about that, then, um, we have raised budgets in each of departments, actually across the board, the last two years. And, um, this last year, I expressed the concern about the fact that we are reaching our last season, so to speak, you know, tax agents. Um, so for the departments who have increased operationally the last two years, potentially free, um, their operation budgets should start to come at flatline, uh, outside of the drawing and, um, unseen circumstances, or, um, additional investments, or the improvements of the actual areas of the markets. Um, just so that we don't continue to burden our tax agents, um, I mean, our citizens in reducing taxes because that's never the goal. Um, so this will just be for, uh, discussion this evening. Um, we will do the same for department heads that have the same, similar request, um, in workshop later this month. Um, as there is still time for us to have additional discussion, and, um, into June, adoption will hopefully happen by the end of June as a show. So, um, second, I guess we'll try to first, um, since one of the, my, 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 I didn't see your, your, your. Okay, so, now we have a little bit, um, the government salaries, about, and I, they not have one for two years, and, 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 um, three percent, um, forty-five million, which is already hard to say. Um, through, since, yeah, the labor, the, 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 county, could, I don't know, it's about two million. Um, but, uh, so I never, for, you know, ever requested more than that. Um, and, and some of the, while we worked on the, it can be, yeah, so much, and the state, and, also, um, they had to fight. And, um, it was in, for, for, for my time. So, my time is a little, working on, and, and, um, it would be, since, one, five million. Um, the government established citizens, they never had a tournament home. Uh, we, it was going to lay in town, town, and we, you know, buildings, and go out there, and, and, you know, things, we were kind of put out, and it's like, well, we got, a, a, a home, and one became a struggle. Um, so as you can see by looking at our budget, we had massive expenses that had come from, just on the building, and they, essentially, officers, um, there is cost, maybe, you know, this will, over, never, never, in your control. Um, so, we have, uh, last year, over a year, we invested around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, I mean, we had, uh, back in our community, um, and writing processes, we had given back to, you know, to our expenses, back to our, um, municipalities, uh, some wanting to nominate health businesses, to help those that were struggling for COVID, um, and then also specific projects, or the labor, and, and, I don't know. But, we, we're, the, 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 back is all for these towns. And, um, we, now, two, uh, twenty twenty, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-one, and this year, we're, we're obviously not only just counting, but we're working on. Um, so, to be private funds, can we talk about, always, all over funds? First of all, we staffed, there, there was more business in Rose County, or not the state, out, you know, people would, and, did not see us as working with us. That is changing with time, we see people who are interested in working with us. And we want to be that, you know, our, our, in the whole county, on, uh, whether it's building, or, or, or doing, it's, um, I know, you know, other, you know, uh, other, it's, um, that, see, that we have thirty-five acres that are also, those for park. We are looking at, um, what the cost for, to, to burn, but that is for me. Because we want, that back, like, tax agents, we would like to see things build up into, you know, for park. Um, and to do that, we look to respond to the federal dollars, so that we can keep this, the, the, second, we answer this year, point seven, you know. Um, that puts us, um, a little out of what we live, or get, uh, for what, uh, for our, uh, revenue expenses. Um, and give for, for, to back in the, to back, represent, for, for, like, a rail spark. Um, a couple of matches, we're looking for, running on prospects. One, these seven points of Rose County, that we set less than thirty miles between, right, and those states. We have a, over my power, I touch, directly in Rose County, and we have a, right aside. That, well, that's, that doesn't change, and, you know, we'll tell you, we see a set, to, to, and, 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 so. So I'm gonna talk to someone who, right now, have, we lost records, after across the country, one of the, who, who, and, 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 they, so, when it's not only, you know, fine, we're facing that, what we have in the world, we decide, right, there for me. So, we're trying to capitalize on that, and so, we're, we're, this is, we're, even in, I understand, the, the, the taxpayers, they, they, this is, is, is that way, for six, you know, and, and, keep us going forward, that would, be, not, a, 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 a.
I apologize, I'm busy, can we?
No, it's, a whole day. I was just speaking, I'm tired. You like, where you want to go?
No, pretty, uh, well, I was only trying to see if, 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 you know, going out, since you're, I don't, I don't, we're not, on that map, so we're not, we're, that, or we got, that, that's, I'm, I'm.
I'm gonna ask, I need to deal with, con, transaction, it's short, and, 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 and. And there's a, um, the interchange, which is, and, and, so they also, that's their interchange. So, they, they are, they can also interchange, see, it's, it's, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, that's, that's their interchange, that, that's, that. Either they have, they, and it's, 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 right, that's what, everyone's looking at, it's, uh, policy. You have, rare, this, uh, this is, we have two transfers, just, I think, they don't have to, in that, for, rare, transfer, there, for, for.
I, here.
So, that, I mean, this, that, that, we, we have something, you know?
You said, we have something, um, to be, uh?
Yeah.
A bit, a bit, a bit, a bit, a bit.
I have, uh, four companies right now, in, 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 and three are close, I think, to, like, the way I'm, so they'll come up, say, one from one, the others, and eight, the, some investments in Rose County, and, um, so this is something, I've said, as something, that is, um, really, that, uh, right, now, we have a beautiful site, and, and, we, you know, we know, from property, but it is beautiful, that, and, and, that, 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 that's, that's, but, 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 but. But in that, I think, that, right, of, of, we have such a seven point, and we want to continue to build on that.
But they talk with this board, and it was my understanding that, that's, uh, it's, it's, it's.
Back to ours, I'm saying, it's gorgeous, and that's, that's, it's gorgeous, that's, that's.
That's good, so that's a big sell.
Yes.
Three, four, eight, they were buying out this board, it's, four, eight, y'all, they're buying, it's, and, and, that's what they're looking for. That's the, this is, that's, that's, green, so.
Maybe it might have been a lot of black people that were there at that part. So I kind of get a little bit used to pick them up. But this year, um, the county that I don't think it's recent, it's been so long, you're just not even so. And we're running out of space. Um, some kind of by the way, you'll pick them up this year. And also, um, with the addition of the gray barn, um, we have the fifth wheel county bike. I turned us in behind and next to the doll scene. Um, I remember me and Lee that the past three years, I had, um, tried it. Um, I had the kids, drive on ways, um, take them home to the state. So with the addition of the lives one farm, um, get that point and they currently until they're six straight. So for age, get all these brothers and sisters. So if you are, we're hoping to be able to, the lives one brothers, but you know, my own. Cause a lot of times parents, you just go to the, you know, the party, you know, the whole, um, up to here. Um, he always went. So if you really need a good, you know, help us out a lot. Um, and I was going to start as, as a, um, go through that research. I've been struggling lately, trying to move on. Now, it's two weeks in charge of my end. And then lastly is I, we, I have a four H assistant. We bumped into an engineer a year or two ago. And I was, um, my agency design engineer. And we, in the V T office, thought I would give you all to our, to judge your major positions. Currently, to judge next people that had it is like a full time four H agent. And we really want to build the instam activities. Um, I'm currently having four H, uh, four H leaders from Congress coming, very counting. Come to the schools, so do the school visits. And I even know how to give them any of these law. There's only can be in the community, still out, out there. Um, I'm taking the, I'm taking one kid, so I got quite a lot of young, my three kids going to junior camp. Obviously, three kids doing the archery competition at state. So I'm still trying to, um, build the program and head the partners, but really think this major position could really, um, do great, especially with the new I R nature of that, me, like some leaves, butter saw, um, judging teams. So maybe with the A position, a lot of that, um, we have the same expectations as my, I mean, just after the, before we go to work, um, to E D A with numbers and, um, and some of their funding. And you see, um, we did a tax, we're trying to be transparent now. Um, I mean, the last one, the southern variation, which is they not have E D A in what the county said. Now they're trying to be very transparent in what E D As put into each position and what the county is. So if you look between the two, you probably not have the A here, this is a four H position. The county only had to put in over level twenty nine thousand. Um, so in the E D A, we have to, um, put up those states now. So very slightly, it's asking about the county, um, to put a little bit of four H program up, um, and support those kids in the community. Want to have any questions?
So when, when you're asking about the vehicle truck, I guess you're trying to period that. Cause I know the school is helping you. That two fifty or higher is difficult for them to be.
And of course, we're glad to say the E D A is providing vehicles for us. And she never, um, never, even though they're just getting experience, um, and like that, um, but the vehicles need company. And we have to do miles right around that which from the county.
What, what was the age in the truck?
I believe it's like two thousand five years.
It's almost fifty thousand miles. To actually. Got any one thing large to deal with on him, though, air media, it's like, um, like another vehicle of operating, run around. So basically, you guys need two vehicles. But I mean, if you get by the one, there's that's fine for two hundred thousand dollars a vehicle.
Two thousand. It's asking, you said, service for us to provide them to vehicles that are big guys. We just have to get this budget here. Our capital is still enough, so we can, I have a line and it was a bit too good. This is why this is here, but the way I know is to try to make a living better. We also will build, you know, give us stuff, we'll be ready to bring them to the department as a workshop. We have vehicles needs and other products. Um, so that will bring us up to a total of six vehicles that we have to purchase in soon much in the year. Yeah, that should, that's right and healthy. We're trying to eat, we should be proceeding. Any others, because everybody else at that point, oh, that is a vehicle for the cars will be in a reasonable deal. Not able to age me and cost us money. So I just, I wonder if we got a, um, how should we do it? Again, has it job on your budget presentation? I appreciate it very, very much. I don't get as thorough reports of how the cost of the work time is here. Yes. I mean, as long as y'all understand, I said, we're, we're trying to figure out, you know, we, this county's large, so we have, we're starting to, we have expectations, like I said, from district. So, um, but this, you know, y'all are aware, we're trying to, we need to share all the support, we're going to be doing, getting settled in. Um, so we're, um, I'm just.
First, if you, what's the final, our people, let's see, I have nothing, they, they have to perform what you want to do. I think we're, don't need to, we're gonna, we need to involve, um, that's it. Or yours, those, I'm worried about. So, um, all of the numbers and hours, lots, lots of period. Um, the business has followed, um, I mean, I think you're kind of, you can play to. Well, if you did already, this is a common, probably, that killing it, but that's, that's not accepted. We all, I, I was, I'll be looking at us that, uh, history that we had, it's honestly, actually, we had a lot of problems. They were only paying twelve, you know, eight, just that, that was very, be, be, you know, going rate, um, LeBron eighteen dollars. And also fifteen bucks, so they didn't get to be set. Now, they found, it took them a while to find the award. So it was, um, that's what we're doing for the rest of the months. And history, you know, they might have ten, I'm told. So you go, so, and so, um, I think, um, trace it, it's only, um, so like, um, it's not like that. And their point is they, 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 and they also got, uh, to really stop that, they just, um, love it. But he's just, he's with, um, um, it's good.
Yeah, I've been, honestly, I've been asking the issue for over at the console, all the workers. And because of the issue we had, is that the system where itself does go from, like, the day that it's ruined. And then the five, let's just go back in, okay, this is the company. But, um, they are, they're, they're trying to work on it, um, about their name. And it sounds confusing to go down the road. And it's been a while, um, honestly, but, but certainly.
This is one of the, you see, it's not very, to be, um, these people, especially this father. Um, but the church, uh, 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 um, this is, we didn't do that. We, we have all the settings on, it was always, um, putting down, um, problems. It's, um, the primary, the chief, who, you know, which is, which is, um, what the office, what the, which, here's what I was going to say, um, he has, I'm a tall man, and good, um, good, um, um, says, um, yes. So we're having, um, but mother, um, and, 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 um, been keeping, so